To order, please rise for the flag salute. Chief Fariazi, lead us, please.
Please.
Attention salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa Roll call, please. Commissioner Kriebel?
Here.
Commissioner Langria?
Here.
Mayor Holtzman?
Here.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. So first thing we're going to do tonight is we have two young ladies to recognize, which I don't know the one, but I know the other one since she was little. I'm going to read the certificates of special recognition and then we'll have you come up and commissioners and I will present them to you and then you can take pictures with your parents, okay? Where's Julia? Is that you? I know who Lauren is. Okay. So this is a certificate of special recognition presented to Julia Logue, whose quick thinking, courage, and steadfastness motivated her to call 911 on July 26, 2019, in the life-threatening situation ultimately saving a life. God bless you. And I'm doing yours last, Lauren, or second, because it was your father. You could get anything from him now for the rest of, just as long as you don't put it in a plastic bag. Nick! The certificate of special recognition presented to Lauren Merlino for your quick thinking, courage, and heroic action on July 26, 2019, which contributed to saving the life of your father. That's quite.
Yeah.
And I got to say, in that video, the way you jumped in the pool, you looked like, what was that? What was that? Baywatch. She was flying. I said, who's looking for a guy like this? I'm fishing in this. Come on up, girl.
Let me get out of the way of pictures here. No, no, you can tell them.
Can we have the parents up here?
Congratulations. Hi, I'm Julia's father.
Did I say love right?
Yes. Nice meeting you.
Jim.
Nice meeting you. Hi, Julia, nice meeting.
This is Jim Lance. Oh, this is Adrian. Okay, we're ready for picture. Come on, guys. We'll stay behind you. Come here. All organized. You're going to be here to see that. Marco, you come over here.
Really?
Julia. Coming out. Adrian. Other mom, the dad, they're tall. You two's heads in between.
All right.
Okay. Are we, okay? We good? Three. Thank you. Thank you. They're still here. You know I would. Your nick is gone. Where'd you go?
Left her.
Nick? It's got to get happy before six o'clock. Who hit that?
Not me. Check the camera.
Thank you. You're welcome.
See.
We know. We know.
Of course you know them. Go ahead, Sid. Go ahead. Okay. We are going to jump right to our superintendent of public works, engineer Ed Stinson, because he has some things he'd like to present to the commission and then he needs to go. Correct? You're welcome.
On your agenda tonight, we have two resolutions. The first resolution is awarding a contract for asphalt installations. We solicited three prices. The low bidder was $13,568 from Cement Works Plus LLC. They're a local company here in Ventnor. It consists of asphalt installation on utility trenches that Public Works has opened and temporarily restored, and also some asphalt restoration adjacent to new concrete gutters that were installed under the Fariazi concrete to alleviate some of the issues at certain spots throughout the island, Little Rock and Winchester being the largest one. That's the first resolution and our recommendation is for the award of that contract. Second resolution is a final work change order. You may recall, we awarded a contract to L. Fariazi Concrete for accessible ramp installation in the Heights section of town. That was done to fix concrete gutter and install the handicap ramps on the corners prior to South Jersey Gas required paving of those streets. In that contract, we did a lot of extra work. We added work to that contract. We replaced almost double the amount of concrete gutter that we had originally anticipated, well more than double the curbing, additional driveways. We did also work at, we put in the pad for the new lifeguard garage on Suri Avenue and we picked off a couple problem areas throughout the island that we had with concrete gutter. So the change order there, there's an appendix that shows the increases in those quantities. The increase in the contract is roughly $130,000, but it is almost entirely additional curbing, additional gutters, additional sidewalk, and curbing. And our recommendation and request is that you approve the change order.
Ed and I, and Public Works, we reviewed all this, these additional items, and they're all needed repairs. We had the contractor here. It was efficient to get it done while he was here and the work was done well and quickly done. So if you drive down some of the streets in the Heights that were paved that we added, you'll see certain sections, we fixed some drainage issues we had, some broken curb, things of that nature. Really worthwhile effort.
Oh, yeah, makes sense. Going through another contract.
We were getting the streets paved by South Jersey Gas. We wanted to make sure we had fixed as much as we could on our side before that paving happened. So it was well worth the money.
Yeah, I agree.
That's something we want to do all the time, to add this much to a contract, but this works for us. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good luck.
Good luck.
It was in capital. It was in capital.
It was in capital, yeah. We had the money there. It's just that particular contract was a little higher. Ernie, while he's here? You want to wait till we get to that? The VAC truck.
Ernie, do you want to come up and talk about the VAC truck so we can get that done as well? And then we'll, because it's a short meeting tonight.
Water and waste water. I've been here since April of 2016. One of the needs that we've seen when I got here is we spent a lot of money as far as our collection system. We're hiring a lot of vendors and a lot of that is for our collection system. And we have brought in VAC truck after VAC truck going through our system, which is obviously aged. And about six to eight months ago, Commissioner Lance, myself, and also John Connor and Ed Stinson conceived of possibly buying a VAC truck. Well, that lost a six to eight month, basically going out to vendors in the area that sell this. We have thoroughly researched it. We came down to three vendors and of those, we compared everything. One was price, one was training, one was the availability of maintenance and how close they are to us as far as where their shop is. And lastly, the truck itself. Now, we've selected a vendor and we base that on those four characteristics. The vendor that we selected has given us training for not only our operators that are going to run the machine, they're also going to train our mechanics. So if there's something simple that goes wrong on this large vehicle, we can handle it in-house rather than dragging it to them. So price, they were actually the lowest. As far as the truck is concerned, pretty much what I viewed and John Connor and Ed Stinson viewed about, they're basically all the same. They have their pluses and minuses depending on the vendor. One may have a vendor better pump on it, one may have better hose that is used, just different things that are have on it.
Is that the exact truck, Ernie?
Yeah, that's the, that's the exact truck except minus the back wheels. It's only a single axle. This would be used around town to clean our wastewater collection systems. We would lift manholes, clean the lines, clean the manhole. The other thing that it would be able to do is we would be able to go around and clean storm sewers. Right now, we have a storm, we have a small VAC truck at Public Works. It's very small and we can collect literally three storm sewers, then we have to run back to Public Works and dump it. So, and plus it's 30-plus years old. Works, but the idea behind this is to actually, we're going to save money. We're going to be able to get a hold ahead of all of our collection system. We're not going to have to rely on somebody to call and be there for us in a time of need. We'll be able to go around and visit each and every manhole in the city, each and every storm drain, and that way we can get a real good handle of our system. Like I said, we've done a lot of research and pretty much we've selected the vendor to hopefully purchase this vehicle. Do you have any questions?
I've been involved with Ernie and Ed looking at this thing and really the sewer and water team over at Public Works. I mean, it was the day they brought the vehicle down, we had any guy that even would touch the vehicle, you know, asking questions and, you know, Snake and Joey and those guys were, they had some good questions about it. How do you do this? How would you do that? What can this do in this case? So what this does, the front end, you see that orange area? That's a hose. It's a jet hose. This, we have a jet truck now. We have a very small towable VAC. This combines both of those things into one unit. The front is the hose and the back is in that, the elephant-looking trunk coming around the front, that's the VAC. What it can also do is you can do what's called hydraulic excavation. So if we're in an area where we can't get in there with a backhoe, because you might damage some pipe that's down there, use the VAC and you have a hookup where you can do a spray nozzle and you spray water into there and that VAC loosens up, the water loosens up the material, the dirt, and then it shoots it up into the vacuum. So that truck that came down, the two-axle, didn't fit on all of our streets, so we had to get a little bit smaller one to get down some of our side streets. This can, an example yesterday, what did, what did Video Pipe cost us for yesterday?
Probably about $2,000.
That was a day. They're here multiple times a month, several dozen times a year. This, this is a machine that can help us. Our guys do the work. We know how to use it and we don't have to bring in Video Pipe for that anymore.
We're not calling it an emergency situation.
Or it's overtime. Right, exactly.
Right. We're doing it proactively and it's regular maintenance, which is what we're trying to accomplish throughout.
Right now, we're trying to do the stormwater maintenance with our, as Ernie indicated, the towable VAC and it's too small. You've seen it. It's a yellow, looks like a, just a big bubble on the back of a trailer and it's just too small. The capacity's not there. It takes too long to do. It will take us too much longer to do the maintenance. And our stormwater's, it's aging, so we've got to clean it out. You get sand in it, you get a lot of things in it, so.
Do other cities have it?
Atlantic City, their sewer authority has two, Ernie?
They have two in Atlantic City. Margate is contracted out to Video Pipe. Long Island has their own, but it's very aged. Let's see, Summers Point has two of their own. Northfield has two. We actually went down to Cape May, they have two. They just purchased a new one within the year, so they're around. We went up to Egg Harbor, what is that, Little Egg, up by lower part of, what is that?
Ocean County.
Ocean, yeah, lower part of Ocean County. They had two of them. So municipalities do have them. I think the biggest thing for us is that over time, I know we will pay for it. I know last year, we spent over $40,000 to Video Pipe and another vendor, North Atlantic Pipe. Easily, we'll be able to do, take that money and we'll pay for itself easily. And then, and one note, you said about the hydro excavation. One thing that's going to happen over the next 10 years is the state's going to require all digging to be done by hydro excavation. They're going to be taking away your backhoes. The problem being is they don't want you to hit any kind of utilities. With hydro excavation, you can't. You're using water to apply to the ground and actually suck it into the machine. So that was another thought and a additive to add to the machine when we were purchasing it. And this is a machine, it's actually, what we did is we specced out to exactly what we would need for our city.
What's the cost, Ernie?
$367.
$367. It's a very pricey machine, but I know we'll get our value out of it.
Okay.
Ernie, you may want to talk to whoever does the community rating system for Ventnor because I know if you have a scheduled maintenance program for street sweeping and cleaning the catch basins, you get points towards your community rating number and the lower that number goes, the more discount to people in Ventnor who own flood insurance policies.
Yeah. Ed mentioned that when we first talked about this. So we'll get Dino on that. Actually, Summer.
We all know, I mean, the infrastructure's been our biggest anchor in this town and this is an opportunity to be proactive. It's not you personally.
It's a cinder block on our ankles.
We found one of them yesterday in the Avenue Avenue.
Yeah, yesterday, we found the cinder block in our collection system.
A cinder block?
Yes.
And I just said that as a joke.
No, seriously, yesterday, we did find one. Somebody had to physically open that manhole and throw it in there.
Yeah.
And I was telling that to somebody at ACUA and he said, he gave me one of his horror stories. He said that they found the bowling ball, one he was working on at one point in his career. Just crazy stuff you find in there.
Yeah. So one of the reasons we brought this in is this is a discussion item.
Yes.
But I'd like to move it into a resolution.
I got it.
So we can get this ordered.
Tonight, yes, okay.
The timeline for this is probably six to nine months.
Yeah, I was looking. It's not on, okay, so we're going to add that tonight?
We're going to add that tonight. We have the resolution here.
Great.
We'll add that to our items and we'll get it here as soon as we can.
Just add it on, what number is it?
251.
Can I answer any more questions?
I think we're good. The actual name of it is?
HAD Hart and Son Equipped. It's a VAC unit and water wastewater treatment.
I'm just going to say the Public Work VAC.
There you go.
Would you like me to go through my?
No, we're good.
No, I'm, not about the VAC.
Oh.
Would you like me to do my monthly report?
No.
No, we're not doing them. We're good. Thank you, Ernie. Thank you so much.
Ernie, you're going to send the written if you didn't yet.
Send a written.
You're sending it.
I'll just, I'll just send you an email what I've got.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thanks for coming.
Have a nice weekend.
Okay. So we'll move on now. We do not have any department head reports. We are not discussing capital. We will not have any minutes to approve. We do not have any ordinances to introduce. We do not have any ordinances to adopt nor public hearing. What we do have are resolutions that we will vote on by consent and I'll go through the few that have not been already discussed. The first one is Resolution 2019-241 and that is authorizing us to accept the annual audit, which I know was good. We had no material findings. Am I correct?
Correct.
Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Next is 2019-242, tax abatement, 1B North Victoria Avenue. The next is 2019-243 and that, is that the one? That's not. Oh, no, this is a resolution, we're in a contract to Arthur Henry for general repairs and construction of utilities on a need basis for the emergency purposes.
Yep. $15,991.
Thank you. You okay with that, Tim?
Yes.
Okay. Next is 2019-244 and that is a seasonal employee. This is an additional person for our surf camp and it is as needed, correct?
Correct.
Right. The next is 2019-245, another tax abatement, which is 1A North Victoria Avenue. Next is 2000, okay, the next two, I think it's E and, hold on, E and F, 2019-246 and 247 are the two that Ed Stinson spoke about.
Actually, F and G.
Is it F and G? Oh, yeah, I can't see. F and J, sorry. Mr. Stinson reported on that, so I don't think we need to say anything else.
Nope.
The next is 2019-248 and that is a resolution authorizing a shared service between the city of Margate and the city of Ventnor for the use of their dog park. And the resolution has a dollar amount, $3,500, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Next is 2019-249 and that is a resolution authorizing us to participate in Union County Co-op pricing agreement, which allows us to get more bang for our buck. Correct, Maria?
Correct.
And it's public safety equipment. Am I correct?
Correct.
Yes. Next is 2019-250 is extending the due date for the 2019 third quarter taxes. So that is all I have. We will have approval of bills and payroll. We had our discussion items.
We had one and we have another one.
Oh, we have another one? What's the other one? I couldn't find mine in my packet. I was looking for.
Wait, are you here to discuss?
Sir Fishing Derby.
Oh, that's right.
No.
Security?
We asked him to discuss security and parking.
He's not on the discussion agenda, but Doug is here to discuss a couple things.
Okay.
That would help me.
Let's hit the derby thing real fast.
Go ahead. Because we've done this every year, am I correct?
Yes.
This is just standard thing that the, Ed Berger from the Atlantic County Sir Fishing
Derby has asked us to open up our beaches to allow people to drive their vehicles down there. They'll have their permit from him.
Right.
So we've done it.
Yeah, every year. Okay.
So that's all.
I'm fine with that, yep.
Do we have to do a resolution on that next month or?
No, just verbal and then we'll get, I'll get together with the chief.
Do you know the dates, Lance? Uh, it's right here. It starts this year from September 23 through November 17, 2019.
Okay.
So, there we go. Where's yours, chief?
Chief, you have a few items?
Do you want to lead us into the first? Do you want to deal with the security first?
I'll lead us into the first and then, because we, it's really just about a, kind of the, kind of the facts that we've uncovered on the parking permits in the city. And I wanted to sort of bring us all to the same level of facts as we go forward, trying to figure out how we handle this. So, in the first ward from Jackson to Frankfurt, and then we're considering extending that parking permit towards, to Little Rock or even Victoria potentially, which after we kind of dug in and we did an inventory of the number of actual parking places that are available to residents and guests, it's in the neighborhood of 650 parking places that are in the two-hour zone. So that on one hand is our basic inventory. On the other hand, we have, over the years, historically given, so, we've historically given each high-rise a permit per bedroom and up to two visitor permits, which is in the neighborhood of 6,000 permits. Add to that, the permits for residents in that area could be between another 1,000 to 2,000 permits. Add to that another 100 for employees in that area. So you're talking to the neighborhood.
Parking on top of each other?
Neighborhood of 7,000 to 8,000 permits.
Excuse me.
Versus a 650-spot inventory. So there's a, there's something we've got to unpack there and we have to figure out how other cities do it.
You think?
How we do it in the most efficient way and what's fair to all the residents, not just the.
Target group.
The high-rise. That seems to be the imbalance in the first.
Yeah, and that came up at our state of the city discussion.
It did, yeah, yeah. It did and this is sort of like the follow-up from that and what we've learned through Jimmy and through Chief and then.
Don't those high-rises, do they, do they all have parking facilities?
They do. So that's part of it. I'm not asking for any answers or any ideas about it just yet. I just want you to know where we're at with it and that.
It's a big number.
That's a huge number.
You've got to look at it. And, and, you know, there's, and the answer's usually always in the middle. There are cities that charge, and Cape May, for instance, well, I'm not saying we're Cape May, but I'm just saying these are, you know, you've got to find out what the common practices are out there. They charge up to $350 per season. They have them first come, first served for 300 parking permits. We're not, we're not there, but other cities charge 50 to $100 for, you know, for perks.
Do we charge a few dollars?
A dollar a year.
A dollar a year. So, there you go.
Dollar.
I mean.
Okay.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
Yeah, so it's not an answer, it's a, it's a statement of facts.
Work in progress.
A work in progress.
Yes, yes. Okay. Did you, now you're.
And I'm just going to add to that is that with the Cedar project, hopefully for the new year coming to fruition and the amount of building that's going on in the first ward, where there was once a lot of off-street parking, the new flood elevation restrictions are requiring off-street parking. And with the garages that are being placed underneath houses now, it's a blessing to have it, but it's also a curse because for every parking space or every driveway they add, it's the curb cuts, which now takes, you're giving them one parking space under their house, but it's taking up two on the street.
Right.
So it's just something we have to be aware of.
Which other cities have as well?
Which other cities have as well?
If you drive through, you know, Avalon, Stone Harbor, those kinds of cities and we have to kind of, so this is, I think it's a good thing that you and the building department are now talking on.
Absolutely.
Data now and, and problem solving.
There's a lot of former places that have renovated and have made what was once garages into legal living spaces, but they remained with the curb cuts, so that's also taken up parking spots. Yeah, so we can close them up. Correct. So it's something that we're going to have to work together.
That was the one on, yeah. And I know there's people that added curb cuts to get the parking on their lawn where they don't have us. I've seen some of that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every morning I see that. It's something we're aware of. It's a big question mark, but we're going to have to do something. And sooner rather than later, we're going to have to formulate a plan.
Yeah.
So that's where we are with that.
Okay.
Any thoughts you have, please bring them to us.
Okay.
And the other thing is building security. We've been working for the last three or four months, trying to shore up City Hall in the best, most eye-pleasing, publicly accessible without turning the building over to potential problems that we have basically been lucky with. Ventnor has not seen any violence like that, nor do I over hope we do. It does not mean we should not prepare for it. And with all of the Homeland Security reports and the, and the building investigations we've done around the state, we are one of the last buildings to be as accessible as we are to the public, which has worked well for us, but I believe the time has come to maybe. given, so, we've historically given each high-rise a permit per bedroom, and up to two visitor permits, which is in the neighborhood of six thousand permits. Add to that, the permits for residents in that area could be between another one to two thousand permits. Add to that another hundred for employees in that area. So you're talking to the-
They park it on top of each other?
Neighborhood of-
Stack parking.
Seven thousand to eight thousand permits.
Excuse me.
Versus a six hundred and fifty-spot inventory. So there's a, there's something we got to unpack there, and we have to figure out how other cities do it.
You think?
How we do it, in the most efficient way, and what's fair to all the residents, not just the-
Target group.
The high-rise.
High-rises, the houses right there.
That seems to be the imbalance in the first.
Yeah, and that came up at our state-of-the-city discussion.
It did, yeah, yeah. It did, and this is sort of like the follow-up from that and what we've learned through Jimmy and through Chief, and then-
Don't those high-rises, do they, do they all have parking facilities?
Yes.
They do. So that's part of it. I'm not asking for any answers or any ideas about it just yet. I just want you to know where we're at with it, and that-
It's a big number.
That's a huge number.
You gotta look at it. And, and, you know, there's, and the answer's usually always in the middle. There are cities that charge, and Cape May, for instance, well, I'm not saying we're Cape May, but I'm just saying these are, you know, you gotta find out what the common practices are out there. They charge up to three hundred and fifty dollars per season. They have them first-come, first-served for three hundred parking permits. We're not, we're not there, but other cities charge fifty to a hundred dollars for, you know, for perks.
Do we charge a few dollars?
A dollar a year.
A dollar a year. So, there you go.
Dollar.
I mean-
Okay.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
Yeah, so it's not an answer, it's a, it's a statement of facts.
Work in progress.
A work in progress.
Yes, yes. Okay. Did you, now you're-
And I'm just gonna add to that, is that with the Cedar project, hopefully for the new year coming to fruition, and the amount of building that's going on in the first ward, where there was once a lot of off-street parking, the new flood elevation restrictions are requiring off-street parking, and with the garages that are being placed underneath houses now, it's a blessing to have it, but it's also, I'm a curse, because for every parking space or every driveway they add, it's the curb cuts, which now takes, you're giving them one parking space under their house, but it's taking up two on the street.
Right.
So it's just something we have to be aware of.
Which other cities have as well.
Which other cities have as well.
If you drive through, you know, Avalon, Stone Harbor, those kinds of cities, and we have to kind of, so this is, I think it's a good thing that you and the building department are now talking on-
Absolutely.
Data now, and, and problem solving.
There's a lot of former places that have renovated and have made what was once garages into legal living spaces, but they remained with the curb cuts, so that's also taken up parking spots.
Yeah, so we can close them up.
Correct.
Yep.
So it's something that we're gonna have to work together.
That was the one on, um- Yeah, and I know there's people that added curb cuts to get the parking on their lawn, where they don't have us. I've seen some of that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every morning I see that. It's something we're aware of. It's a big question mark, but we're gonna have to do something. And sooner rather than later, we're gonna have to formulate a plan.
Yeah.
So, that's where we are with that.
Okay.
Any thoughts you have, please bring them to us.
Okay.
And the other thing is, building security. We've been working for the last three or four months, trying to shore up City Hall in the best, most eye-pleasing, publicly accessible, without turning the building over to potential problems that we have basically been lucky with. Ventnor has not seen any violence like that, nor do I over hope we do. It does not mean we should not prepare for it. And with all of the Homeland Security reports and the, and the building investigations we've done around the state, we are one of the last buildings to be as accessible as we are to the public, which has worked well for us, but I believe the time has come to maybe update our security in the building and add some things. So we reached out to a company named Johnson Communications, who deals with sledge cards and doors, stuff like that, to secure our doors at least better. And we have come up with a proposal from them, and they were the best company. We dealt with a bunch of them. They came up with the best proposal to add sledge cards, add door access with sledge cards, key fobs, or wristbands. It keeps track of who goes in and out of our doors. It locks automatically behind you. I'm also gonna be proposing in the future that the building after hours not be public accessible, because of the police department being here. It's something that we've always ignored, and we've allowed the public to have free access. I think those times are kind of, have come and gone, and what we're, we're going to do is gonna be adding a after-hours kiosk at the Cambridge Avenue, if the proposal's approved, with a camera, and they'll be talking to our dispatchers when they want to come in. The bathrooms and stuff like that are not gonna be accessible to the public anymore. It's, we're one of the few that even allows that. In my opinion, it's a huge security risk, because my dispatchers can't be keeping an eye on everybody who comes in.
Right.
It's tough. We also are gonna be addressing the mayor's office issues with security there, and add a similar camera outside Patty's door, which will be able to buzz people in. And we'll be doing the same outside upstairs into the police area, which is my office and the administration's office. It's not offensive, it's least intrusive, it's, it's the least we can do with the way things are, without locking this down and building it, really making it secure with metal detectors. And I don't think we're there, but I think we need to do something. And much like we did with Lafayette Avenue, V E C C, a little bit of security goes a long way, and it's gonna take a little bit of retraining with the public, but they'll get used to it. And it's, you know, it's just a sign of the times. So, I will be bringing a proposal to you in the near future with everything that I need, and it's probably gonna be out of capital, which we already have money set aside and bond, and it's gonna be about a hundred thousand dollars. But it will get us moving in the right direction.
So I ask Doug to come here and update you, because as he said, he's ready to move forward with a proposal that would be on an agenda, and I wanted you to hear what, what the thinking is. So have you heard anything alarming, or something you really didn't like?
Right. As Chief explained it, I'm much more comfortable than what I heard just the other day. I saw Bill come across my desk for, you know-
That's something different.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that, but now, what he's saying makes, that makes sense.
For the public, the public will not notice anything when they come in during work hours.
What happens behind Patty.
Yes.
Makes more sense now.
Right.
So now I'm comfortable with what, what the chief just explained. You're right. We need to have control over what, who has access to this building.
It's really, that's what it's gonna come down to, Commissioner.
I mean, there'll still be public access during the day, but it'll, it'll be controlled.
Right. It's not gonna be anybody can just open a door and walk in.
Right.
Those, that's gotta stop. We're gonna be just making, they're still gonna have that, that approachable window, where you can talk to people through it and everything like that. Nothing's really gonna change, but for us, it's gonna be a matter of just personal security. You know that you're behind a secure area, and not John Two Citizen has got a, an agenda's gonna walk through your door and do whatever, so.
Doug, during working hours, the exterior doors are still open?
The exterior doors, right, yes.
To the public?
At this time, yes.
Yeah, this is office space.
The interiors, yep.
However, at the close of, on weekends and stuff like that.
Locked.
We really do have to. I mean, we've had a homeless person sleeping in our, in our, in our stairwell, which we've allowed during the cold times, but those times have come and gone again.
Right.
Where we have to be a little more secure, and, and that's where I'm at. And everybody knows the way I feel about things like that. I, I would like to open my office to everybody, but even I feel, you know, a little bit concerned at this point. So, a little bit of, and ounce of prevention goes a long way.
So the building will be, the exterior doors will be locked by what, four-thirty?
Uh, whenever.
Five?
Meetings will still be open, but we're gonna utilize at nighttime, the Cambridge Avenue entrance is gonna be the, the main entrance that I would use. And it'll be much easier to police and surveil.
Handicap accessible.
Handicap accessible, the elevator's right there.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, it's a win-win for us. Little adjustment for everybody who's been here.
So the, the kiosk goes, notifies who, dispatch?
The kiosk for the back, like, for meetings, it'll still be open.
Okay.
But for, when there's not a meeting, and there's only a few meetings during, during the week or whatever, you'll enter and I'll, I'll bring it the next meeting. I will show you a beautiful PowerPoint. It'll be a kiosk, just like any other. Press the button, dispatcher will say, "How you doing? Wait, where, how may I direct you? I need to see an officer." Okay, they'll be buzzed in, they'll be waiting in the hallway.
Mm-hmm.
It's really simple.
And that'll be right at the same-
And they'll have a camera, yes. So if it's somebody who needs police help, they can get themselves in real quick. They'll, they'll be buzzed in. There'll also be an emergency button they can press, too. It's really sophisticated, but it's not as, it's not as intricate as you might think. It's, it's really cool. And it's really, I mean, it's, it's, it's public-friendly. So, it, it's really, the time has come.
So, is code, does still has a pass-through window, so?
Yeah, that has to change.
That's gonna be my, that's gonna be phase one and a half, too, is gonna be adding, what we have is a, and I hate to use the word ballistic, but it's, let's just say it's, it's resistant.
Right.
Glass that cannot be broken, that the public will still be, you'll be able to slide open if you want to and talk to somebody. But for the most part, we need to secure our employees as much as we can, from anybody. People get irritated over the slightest things now, whether it's taxes, building codes, violations. Remember, we have our police department, our court here. I mean, you've got a lot of things for people to potentially get angry at, and we've always gone under the impression that it would never be Ventnor. And I just think that it's time to maybe just tighten it up a little bit. And this is the best way to do it, in my opinion.
I agree.
I think we're on the same page. Good explanation, too, because I have questions.
Thank you.
I would just ask for a thorough review of that sledge card system. I know there's a couple, like, Hayfle makes one. There's a couple that I'd like, we, when, I wanna make sure that we're buying the right hardware from them. And I trust your, your advice on it, but I'd like-
You should always question it. That's your job.
Yeah.
And I, I will show to you why I think this country, this company's the best, and you'll go with your, with your thought.
Yeah.
So I will bring a, I'll have it, I'll even have them come in, if you would like to do a presentation. They do a great presentation, they sold us on it, and it's-
Sledge cards can be kept in their lager.
My only concern is what, the expensive hardware.
Bracelets. You can rub the bracelet on the door, key fob. For my guys that are usual, because we utilize the, the holding cells and everything, my guys, I would get them to be bracelets. They would just wipe the bracelets, so they can still control suspects and stuff like that.
Right, because they won't be able to sledge.
And we just have cars like that.
Right.
That's what the county has.
Right. And it can be, and it can be formulated into our IDs.
That's what I said, you can put it right, exactly.
And, you know, so you know who's going in and out. We keep track of it. So, like I said, we don't have none.
None of us have IDs.
Come up and see me, I'm the ID guy, too. Like Donna Peterson, you sit at the bottom of my little resume, but it's one of those titles like that.
Stop it.
Your ID maker.
Oh, my gosh. One question.
Yes, may I?
Which I'm sure you handled it already, but the, the building's historical.
Yes.
So we won't have any issues with putting anything on the outside of?
No, no, the doors-
This is the interior.
Even the fittings, the fittings that they, they provide are Historical Society-friendly.
Okay, great.
And the doors, some doors will need to be replaced, but most of the doors are retrofitted.
Okay.
And they, they can, they can be retrofitted into the, into the existing doors.
Okay.
So, we've pretty much thought of everything, but I'm sure you guys-
I figured you did.
Something else.
Thank you.
The kitchen guy will do that.
That's what we do.
That's what you do. That is exactly what you do, so.
That's right.
So that's all I have for you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
And you're, we're gonna have a resolution for the next month?
For next month, I will have this prepared once, but I would like to maybe, with Tim and Maria, bring them, bring them in and let, show you what we, what they have.
Show and tell?
Show and tell.
Yeah.
Great.
All right?
Yep.
Now, if you don't need me anymore, I'll be leaving.
We don't need you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you, Doug.
I agree with you.
Okay. That's it for discussion, correct?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to open public portion for the items that we discussed?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's open to the public if anyone would like to speak on anything that we've discussed so far. Is it what we discussed already?
Oh, that's, oh, definitely.
We're, we're gonna have another one. We'll jump, don't worry, we're gonna move fast. I see none. Do I have a motion to close public portion?
Motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to close workshop portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. We have no minutes to approve, we have no introductions of ordinances, we have no adoption of ordinances or public hearings. We have a public comment section now for the resolutions that we will be voting on by consent. Do I have a motion to open public comment?
Motion to open public on resolutions?
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone from the public like to speak on the resolutions? No.
Motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to adopt, where am I, resolutions 2019 dash two forty-one to 2019 dash two fifty-one by consent?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kriebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Al, would you like to read our bills and payroll to be approved tonight?
Sure. Our bill list tonight is one million seven hundred and ninety-six thousand nine eighty-one oh four. Mostly that's the school payment. And for payroll, it's six hundred and forty-nine thousand eight eleven ninety-nine.
Do I have a motion to approve bills and payroll stated by the CFO?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kriebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Do we have any other announcements or safety report? We're good?
Nope.
We're good?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I have one, is that Commissioner report? I'm sorry, we're getting to that.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine. Commissioner comments, reports.
I, I just have one, one thing I wanted to pass on. It's a good, a positive thing. Despite our, our ladder truck getting hit, or getting into an accident, the repairs are fully covered, including a rental vehicle through our insurance is gonna have a quint, which is, allows us to train on a vehicle that we're considering purchasing in the future, so.
I didn't know that it would.
You didn't know that was, okay. So there was a, there was an accident, and that is underway, but a vehicle like that is, you know, is a six-month, could be as much as that for-
What rental agency did you go to for a ladder truck?
Yeah.
That's what I want to know.
I know, we've, yeah.
It hurts.
Hey, excuse me, Enterprise?
Right. You gotta make sure you return it with a full-
Just eight wheels.
You still have to make sure you return it with a full tank of diesel, by the way.
I'm sure.
Geez, so, yeah.
It's a true-
What happened with the truck?
It's true. There was an accident on the street. Someone was parked in the wrong, illegally, and it couldn't make a turn.
How?
There were some doors on the side that, and some equip, some equipment doors that got, that got damaged, but it's, it's a, it's a million-plus vehicle that takes a lot of, that has to be repaired and replaced by, by, you know, qualified.
The car was parked legal or illegal?
Illegal.
Of course.
Yeah.
And our truck couldn't make the turn?
Our truck could not, our vehicle, our, our ladder truck, this is our biggest vehicle.
Shouldn't they pay for that?
Sorry?
Shouldn't the person that parked illegal pay for it?
Eventually they will. I'm sure our insurance company will, after their insurance company.
Yeah, no dollars really, other than our, our deductible, just like normally would work.
Okay.
But on the, but on, the next, the next thing I wanted to mention was just to see our fire department at work saving dollars. My grandmother used to say, boil the bones to make the soup. After, you know, to get, to wring every little bit of value out of something. We have this two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for AirPax. It was an expense to us, but as you drill down on how that's gonna play out, we're taking the AirPax that we have at GovDeal.com, we're probably gonna get somewhere north of fifty thousand dollars for that equipment. And then, we're also saving money in the training and, and for that, for, that we're doing locally now, instead of going out. And then, the, the, the balance of the equipment that we're not gonna be using, is gonna be given to, that isn't worthy of Gov.com, is gonna be given to volunteer fire departments that need that kind of equipment.
Right.
And that is goodwill on our, on their behalf. So there's, there's a lot of, really working that, um, oh, we're also taking some of that equipment to the county to train on, and trading it in kind for, for training facilities.
Okay, so we have to pay for training.
Yeah, so there's a lot, there's a lot going on.
Creative financing.
Exactly.
I like it.
Yeah, so, just thought we'd share some wins every once in a while, right?
Yeah, that's, that's good stuff, especially when it comes to money. Okay. Lance, you okay?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so, um-
Well, you know what, I should update you guys on the pier.
I'm so confused that there's an email.
Yeah, so, the pier restrooms that we're, we're trying to get built this winter ran into a little bit of a hurdle with a permit that had expired in 2017. We're, we're back on schedule. We have to get an updated permit for that. It's a CAFRA permit, Coastal Area Facilities Review Act permit. Been on the, back before the emails with DEP and their staff, their first question was, do you have a sewerable area map that includes the pier? We looked at the one the county has, it does not include the pier. I called up Dick Carter, our former city engineer, because he rebuilt that pier. I said, "Dick, did you ever take care of this?" He says, "Yep, sent me a letter last night, amended what's called our two-oh-eight plan to include the pier specifically with the restroom on it." So, that was a, a big hurdle that could have caused some significant delays. We're in the right lane now, we believe. We've gotten some support from Senator Brown's office, and a summer resident happens to be the deputy commissioner of the DEP, so that helps a little bit, too.
They'll all be using it.
Yes. Well, he lives right there. His summer place is right there. So, just to, to get us in the right lane. So we should be good to go. We're, we're gonna refile that application now.
Right.
For not only the restrooms, but the-
Snack bar.
Snack bar out there, too, so.
Yeah. Was the original permit, did it include a snack bar on the larger facility that we're not doing at all? There was a third build, there was, there was a, there There was a third build, there was, there was a, a second building that was not even being, I don't think it was.
That was the locker room for the fisherman.
Locker room, yeah, which was part of that permit, so I'm just thinking, does it help us in any way, if there was some type of-
We're, we're going smaller.
Much smaller, yeah.
Smaller, so that, that's, that's what they look at. It's on a pier that exists.
They're smaller than they are.
Honestly, it's a very frustrating-
I, I was about to say, the best, the most frustrating thing is that we have no idea, it could be a week, it could be a month, or-
No, it won't be a week.
Okay.
I can pretty much guarantee.
It won't be a week, so it could be a month, it could be six months.
Exactly, probably not a month, yeah.
Probably not a month.
I've, I've impressed upon them that we need to construct this in the fall.
Yeah.
Because we don't wanna be building it in the dead of winter.
Right.
And we want it up for-
We want it up for the spring fishing season.
Right.
As well as the, the next summer season, so.
And you still have to put it out to bid.
Right, so I would, I would start that now.
Okay.
Put that out to bid now.
Yeah.
Um, and get that, get that going, get a contractor in, get it moving forward. Because I, it, it's moving in the, in the process, we're in the right, like I said, and I've said a couple times, we're in the right lane now. It seemed like we were kind of meandering.
All right.
Left passing lane to dead slow right lane, so, we're moving.
I, I know this is gonna sound like I'm kissing up, but I, I, you don't know how often I reflect on how much you each know in your individual areas, and how hard some of these things would be to get done, if we had somebody that didn't know this stuff. Like, this is your area, I mean, I can't imagine what we're going through. To get this done without someone who knows this stuff.
Yeah.
Or the right person to call, I mean, look, I, I actually emailed him last night while I was at a hearing out in Hamilton, I emailed Roger, and, because he asked me to go to lunch today with Dick, I said, hey, does Dick have anything on this? And within an hour, I had the letter in my inbox.
Right.
And I sent it right up to, to DEP, and she's like, this is great, solved that issue, so it's-
It, it would just be so difficult.
Yeah, the relationships are there.
Even the words are tough to understand sometimes.
Acronyms. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for teaching.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right, so the next is the public comment section, where you can get up and speak about anything, do I have a motion to open public comment?
Motion to open public comment.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
You just come to the microphone, you have to state your name and address, and then say whatever you wish.
So, I'm Ira Winston, one eleven South Buffalo. First, I just wanted to comment, I attended your meeting a few weeks ago, the public meeting, and I was super impressed with all the things you guys have done to make this place better.
Oh, thank you.
I, you know, live in Philadelphia, or outside of Philadelphia during the year, and I just contrast this government to the one in my small town, and you guys are professionals and you work together, and those are two things that we don't have, and it's great to see. So that's just a, a word of thanks.
Thank you.
And then, the other, other comment I have is, so, I guess, before next season, we're gonna be opening, you know, one bar and one movie theater that serves alcohol, and right now, you know, most of the restaurants and stores and everything, you know, we're pretty closed up by about ten-thirty, maybe eleven o'clock on a, on a, on a, on a good night. Um, and now, I think we're probably gonna have some places that are open somewhat later and serving alcohol, and-